So not hearing any objection. We'll begin the July 19th council time agenda. We begin with public comments on agenda items only.
So I would, before we do that, I'll ask the council if you would want to consider removing item 3.1 under new business. We did, Oliver and I met with counselors and 101s on Monday to talk a little bit more about the process and answer some questions. This is scheduled for a public hearing next Tuesday, so there'll be deliberation, public feedback, and then a decision by council at that time.
Okay, and I'm certainly good with that. Any objection? Sue looks good with that. Glenn, do you have any objection to removing it from today's agenda?
Um, I kind of would prefer to keep it on there. I mean, we can, it could be a very, very short discussion, but there just were a few points that I would like to kind of talk through, if possible.
Well...
It's up to the council.
Yeah, and we need three votes to do anything, and it is on the agenda. So if you're insisting we have it, then it will remain on the agenda. Don't we? I thought we need three votes to take any action.
I'd be happy accommodating counselor if he has some questions. I think that'd be fine. And we can keep it short, but it'd be good maybe to have this in advance of the public meeting.
Okay, well, let's move forward. So, public comments on agenda items only. Are there any in the room?
Good morning, council members. My name is Sean Pilaponis, S-H-A-W-N-P-I-L-I-P-I-L-I-N-I-S. I'm a concerned citizen of Clark County. I also work for the Department of Corrections at Large Correction Center. What I believe is happening is wrong. Poor decision made by the Department of Corrections closed Large Correction Center versus another facility, excuse me, another facility. The work, as you all know, Large Correction Center does to this area is vital. All the fires, the forest maintenance, and all the community service that these work crews do, as well as our community work crews. The Department of Corrections has made a short-sighted decision to close the facility versus looking at other options. One other such option that has less of an impact is closing the Olympic Correction Center, which does not have the education, medical, or DNR commitment at the same level as Large Correction Center does. We have mental health built into our facility, medical, dental, as well as these vocational programs through Clark College. We graduate more inmates through a GED and high school plus program than all the other facilities combined. So when the Department of Corrections is saying that these, the inmate population is going to be better served at a major security facility, that's just not correct. You go from an institution where your needs are being met in the low 100s, 200s, to now having a population of over 2,000. Staffing levels at all these facilities are critical. So we do appreciate your support, and if there's anything that we can do information-wise to help educate you, help educate the other folks, please reach out to us. I will leave my contact information, as well as the other folks that are prepared to speak here today. This isn't over. We are trying to fight back, as we have done in the past. As a facility, we absolutely love the way that we are able to support the community. We do the things that the Department of Corrections says that they want to do. The inmate population, again, time and time again, is, they understand that going back to these facilities is a step backwards for them. They have to wait for visitations. They have to wait for the medical treatments. They have to wait for the education, some of which they've spent years trying to get. And until they got to our facility, they didn't get it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please, go ahead. Yes, sir. You just raised your hand? Yeah.
Good morning, council. My name's Mark Francis. I am here as a concerned citizen, not as a member of the Department of Corrections. In my capacity at the Department of Corrections, I am the Community Work Crew Sergeant, which means I operate the community work crews for cities, towns, county agencies, Clark Public Utilities, who else? Clark Public Works, and all those good people. The program itself has been diminished over years. They cut my crews from five to two, which means we used to have 50 men out here working in the community side by side with civilians, getting projects done, taking pride in their work, giving back to their communities and whatnot. But I heard the gentleman about the Vancouver Lake thing talk about noxious weed control. Every July and August, I set a crew aside to work with Clark Public Works to go around the county and remove tansy weeds, which, in fact, I believe our crews are one of the main contributors to that, getting rid of that weed. But other things that it does is it gives these guys an opportunity to have the motivation to get up every morning, go to work, be responsible for something, but it also integrates them back into the community because they are working side by side with our community, town, and city folk. These guys take tremendous amount of pride in the work they do, you know, regardless of some of the, what's the word I'm looking for? Some of the bad stuff that goes along with being convicted of a crime, some of these guys really want to give back. They really want to prove that they're worthy of rejoining our communities. I see it all the time. We've reduced our population. We reduced it by 37, I believe, last week. The men that were getting ready to go out, I was the acting shift sergeant that day, and everyone that I talked to did not want to leave. DOC is going to say something different. They've already come out in paper and said that these guys want to leave, and that's not the case. I don't know who they talked to, but it wasn't our guys. On that note, I think I will just step aside and let you go on about your business. Thank you.
Thank you. And to each of you, I hope you do leave your contact information if you haven't already. And obviously, the item we're talking about is the council speaking up on Larch Mountain, which we'll address pretty soon. Please, sir, go ahead.
Good morning, council. Thank you for your time today. My name is Robert Stricker. Been a longstanding citizen here of Clark County, born and raised in this area. Grew up on a dairy farm just north of here in Battle Ground. I worked for Large Correction Center for 24 years. I went to college and got my degree in counseling, and I'm a correctional counselor there at Large Correction Center. So when the department made the announcement just a couple weeks ago to close Large Correction Center down, completely close it, it was a complete shock to those of the employees that work there, our families, our children, and the local community here, because we service southwest Washington with fire prevention and protection. We're fighting fires right now. We have 40 inmate man crew out there right now, fighting their, near Washougal and Canlis, fighting those fires and stopping those from getting to the houses and to local businesses in that area. They were also instrumental in protecting the I-5 tunnel fire as well. And my job as a counselor is, when they come to our facility, they work their way to the minimum custody level with good behavior. And then what our job is to help them integrate back into society, because whether people like it or not, the prisoners eventually are going to be released after they've served their sentence, and they're going to be our neighbors. And so the best thing to do is get them educated through, my coworker there mentioned, Clark College is a great partnership with us there at the facility. We have excellent educators that come up from Clark College and are very dedicated in helping the guys on my caseload get their high school 21. Mr. Clark and I had 10 guys graduate a couple weeks ago with their high school 21 diploma, so they can go out, and you can see the pride in that, is they can go out, because education empowers people. They can go out back into society here in Vancouver, in the local Clark County area, and actually apply for jobs and get jobs, because they actually have that high school diploma. We also offer them drug and treatment education programs, helping them wean off of the addiction of drugs and alcohol. I'm also a minister here locally, as a pastor here in Vancouver, so I bring up religious leaders up to the prison, and we have them connected with whatever faith they are. If they're Protestant, Judeo-Christians, or Mormons, or Wiccans, or whatever their faith is, we bring in religious leaders to help them with that, so they are reconnected with their faith and with their family. We also help them integrate back with their family. We do Zoom meetings with their family members. We let them participate with the children for the local school meetings and their parent-teacher fellowship meetings, and we did that. And I just want to really quickly give you a testimony of one of the guys on my caseload. Just last week, when he came back from the Tunnel 5 fire, he's on the DNR crew for the Department of Natural Resources, and he said, "Mr. Stricker," he goes, "I've done a lot of destruction in my life. I've hurt a lot of people. I've victimized a lot of people, but saving those six homes in the tunnel fire, and we saved an elderly couple that almost died in one of the houses." He goes, "I felt, for the first time in my life, as a righteous man, that I was able to give back to protect society." And we need that. And if Large Correction Center is closed by the department, and we go away here in southwest Washington, this community is not going to have that anymore, and that's instrumental. We need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, council, for giving us the opportunity to speak in front of you. My name is Sidney Clark. I actually live here in southwest Washington. I also work at Large Correction Center as a counselor. We're here today on our own time. This is a serious issue. But first off, I want to thank the council for having the courage to stand up and speak out about the wrongdoings of closing Larch. We and the citizens of southwest Washington, we want to thank this council, and we 100% support the resolution that's in draft that we read, because you nailed it, you're right on point, you understand. You are the only officials down here in southwest Washington that said anything. We haven't heard anything from the city. We haven't heard anything from some of our state officials who's in power. This is the only official body that southwest Washington citizens have heard from and stood up about what's going on with the closure of Larch. I have to say that, and we thank you for that. Also, is that the issue is not just closing Larch, it's the domino effect that you just heard, some of those effects. Fire is serious business. We are in the Yakko Burn State Forest for a reason. From 1902 through the 1950s, when CCC was put there during the war, after that, and Larch was established in 1956. We're there for a reason, and one of those reasons is fire suppression, the entire southwest Washington, down through the gorge. If we are shut down, we will not have initial attack. That's the key. We will not have initial attack, and that's a travesty, and we should not allow that to happen. I want to remind people, one of the DOC officials said, "They want to move Larch because we're too far up in the woods, and we're in a rural area, so they want to put us in long view, work release." I said, "Well, the reason we're there is so we can protect the natural resources in the homes there to do initial attack." And I want people to remember, this is one of the original pictures of the Yakko Burn, when they put Larch there. That's why I was there, to protect that, and that's where we are, and that's where we should stay. And we're going to continue to fight until the governor listens to us, because at the end of the day, he has the power to put a pause on this, so people in southwest Washington and our partners can have an opportunity to voice their concerns, which should have happened, and it didn't happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments this morning on topics on the agenda?
Hi, I'm Noel Leveron from the Building Industry Association of Clark County, and I'm here to just comment on the Housing Option Study and Action Plan. I have been participating across different meetings and comments, and I have deep concerns that the feedback loop is somewhat broken. I sit in on DEEB meetings. I've reviewed their memo. Their memo reflects a lot of the feedback that our members have given, and there are some really problematic things within the proposal that will be counterproductive for housing affordability. Some of the products just won't be marketable, some of them won't be buildable. And so I asked the council to really look deeply into the memo that DEEB is providing and the comments that will be coming forward from our membership before passing that plan into action.
Thank you. Please.
Well, Council, Eric Galimo, SGA Engineering, also a member of the DEEB, which is the Development Engineering Advisory Board. Just wanted to encourage you, we submitted a memo that had some comments about the Housing Option Plan. Most of the information in that plan is good, so I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but there are a few items that need to be addressed, and we tried to focus on those in this memo. The most significant are some of the design standards that pretty much limit the ability to do a reasonable-sized garage on a small product. And the adverse impacts of that is, when you have a smaller home, it gets more narrow. It does, the garage, if you have any, does take more of a percentage of the front facade, and it's trying to limit that and also limit some of the driveways to only 10 feet wide. But the other negative impacts of smaller houses, which we need for affordability, is it pushes, it impacts the neighboring developments and the neighbors in those infill areas. So if you don't have adequate area on the lots for parking an automobile, they end up in the neighborhoods. Storage ends up outside. You end up with cluttered products or cluttered homes and cluttered yards. So we do encourage you to take a look at that. There's other ways to address, I think, the aesthetics with varying facades, instead of trying to limit, you know, the front of the garage. There's different, there are some examples of pictures in the memo to council from DEEB that show examples of products that would not be allowed, which are currently some of the most efficient and affordable products in Clark County. I've actually built several of these myself, and quite a few of our clients built them, and these would not be allowed under some of the compact lot or narrow-lot developments. So I also wanted to extend an invitation. DEEB in the past has participated with presenting in front of council, being part of the process during the hearings, and we are able to do that again if you have additional questions or requests from us. We are your advisor. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Anyone online? Sue?
Yes, before we move on, I would just thank you all from Large Correctional Facility for coming down for your dedicated work. It's a remarkable facility. It's a model, and I really appreciate your work.
And I would ask you to stay, because we, hopefully, will get to your topic very quickly, as well as the Housing Option Study. So let's go to old business right away. Any corrections to the minutes? Motion?
I would move approval of the minutes of July 12.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, old business. I'm looking for my draft. Here it is.
And I did get feedback from one counselor, so if staff can pull up. I did just a couple edits based on feedback that I received, and we should be able to see that on the screen and track changes. The first edit, just so you know, on line 617 on the first page, just changing it from State of Washington to Washington Department of Corrections, because they're the ones that actually announced the closure. And then the, at the end of the resolution, on line 44, it's expanding this, so what was originally drafted was, "On behalf of the residents of Clark County, the council objects to the closure of Larch Correction Center and urges Department of Corrections to reverse the decision." I expanded the second sentence based on something back that, "Furthermore, if the Department of Corrections does not reverse the decision, the Clark County Council is willing to partner with the Department of Corrections on any further discussions regarding other uses in the facility that may benefit the community."
Thank you. So let me, first, I don't have any questions, and I know we've discussed this. Let me just say this for the other counselors, as well as for those that did take the time out to come today. You know, I've been in fires before. I've been evacuated before, and I was evacuated last year. And I've also worked a lot with different Department of Corrections in different countries, as well as here. And I will tell you, there's, and what an exclamation point, seeing the sky filled with smoke right now. And I was, my family was evacuated last fire. And I went to Grove and walked around as the fire base was being set up at Grove and talked to the inmates. And then you jump to the north side, and I went, and then they were deeply engaged in that firefight at Grove as their base, so I got to talk to them there. I didn't go up and actually watch them in action. But I will tell you, as a former judge, too, you know, we, over decades of looking for, what is the best thing for the community, for public safety, to prevent recidivism? Restorative justice is like the centerpiece now of best practices. There is no better program than doing this wildfire fighting, because they are giving directly to the community, and they're working hard. And in dangerous situations, they are giving to the community. So I, when I heard, and we were just surprised, and probably why you haven't heard from other public officials yet, we didn't know, and we had no idea they were going to drop this on us. So I'm all in favor of enlarging the operations at Larch Mountain, because this is a great program for criminal justice. As we transition people from having committed crimes, they're paying their debt to society, what better way to give them a skill, give them a high school diploma, and get them reintegrated out into the community, and give them pride in what they're doing? So I'd like to see it enlarged. And I will tell you, on my way here, I had another meeting before the Vancouver Lake, and that was with Senator Wilson, and Large Correctional Facility was first and foremost our discussion points. So it is going to generate discussion, and I'm hoping the Department of Corrections will listen, and that's what this resolution is for, because this is, firefighting is important. What has burned before will burn again, and we're, you know, we're breaking all kinds of heat records in the world, not in this, and as well as the United States. And I know, I told staff, I was planning on going to Phoenix last week, and then I looked at the weather forecast, and oh my gosh, I don't think it's been below 110, except maybe 2 o'clock in the morning. So, you know, this is the situation we're in, and to close our nearby first responders for wildfires is the wrong decision, and it's wrong for the criminal justice system. So we need to speak up, and I'm hoping we can do that with this resolution, with the small changes that were made. Discussion points on the resolution?
I would just say I'm fully supportive. I don't know if this will go to our council meeting for...
Yeah, I think that would be best, so we can put it on for next Tuesday's council meeting, if you want. You can certainly adopt it today, but I think it would be good if we had all five counselors, because I...
Yes, I think that'd be good, too.
So we can clean it up and get it ready.
Well, and you already know I'm fully supportive of it, having asked for it. And Glenn, what are your feelings?
Yes, so I'm fully supportive, too, and I support the changes that were offered, and I offer one additional change to consider, and that would be to change on line 44, willing to, change it to requests, or re-request to, is requesting to partner. Basically, you know, just a little bit more, you know, intentional language than, rather than willing to, a little bit less passive.
Yeah, I think that, I don't see any counselors objecting to that, so we'll make that edit. And just so that people know, we can send this to the governor's office, or get sent to the head of Department of Corrections, and feel free to join us next Tuesday if you have some time to come in as well, as we read this in the record.
And as much as there's always a civil cloud, and hopefully, some of your employees will sign up for our jail correction services, if you want to stay local, but we are going to fight for you. We need your facility opened, and thanks for coming down and making your comments.
Can I just say one, oh, go ahead, go ahead, if that's okay, chair?
That's fine, go ahead.
Less than 15 seconds. Thank you so much for your guys' support. I know the four of us, we will continue to use vacation time, because the department doesn't pay us to be here, but we will use our personal time to come, if you guys let us know, and we'll speak on behalf of everything that we do. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so you have your direction on that. We're set to go. We'll get that published as soon as we have a full council to vote on it. We have new business, item 3, the Housing Option Study and Action Plan. I'm wondering, the most efficient way to do this is maybe to have Glenn state his questions?
I think that would be helpful, because we have a hearing in which, that's scheduled for next Tuesday, in which the community and council will have an opportunity to, you know, share their opinions and deliberate. So if there's process questions or a question that needs to be answered before the hearing, Oliver is here, as well as staff, and I believe the consultant is online as well.
So why don't we, if Oliver, you don't object to that, we'll let, we'll just start with Counselor Young's questions, and then just for those speakers, I would let you know, you know, we, I printed, highlighted, annotated your emails, and met with Oliver and showed him, or talked about the photographs of the homes that you thought would be precluded by this new code, and so there is, it's, there's ongoing work as a result of your work. So with that, Glenn, do you have some specific questions? We can tee up topics for discussion.
Yeah, I think one of, and this could have gone under policy, but since it was on here, I figure we might as well keep it on here, but I would kind of like to have a little bit more broad discussion on just sequencing of events and timing. And one of those that I would list as an example is the Planning Commission public hearing on this and the workshop that was prior to it. And so the workshop was June 1st, I believe, and the public hearing was June 15th, is that correct?
There were actually three work sessions with the Planning Commission on this item.
Right. But the final, the final workshop was 14 days prior to the public hearing, and we have to have the final documents for the public hearing posted 15 days in advance. So that essentially means that if there's any feedback from the Planning Commission, it cannot be changed as a recommendation towards the, you know, the public hearing. And I realize that, you know, if they prefer to have changes they can go through and on the fly, they can make those recommendations, but I think all of us know that it's, it's pretty difficult to do those, especially given the Open Public Meetings Act, where you can't, you know, we can't have any discussions outside of the meeting, so you're kind of being blindsided with new information and asked to legislate on the fly, kind of. And so I think anything that we can do to prevent this kind of thing, where we feel like there are, there is content of value that's come in, but wasn't, the timing process didn't allow coordination into the system, that we should try to work to make that process better.
Good morning, councilors. For the record, Oliver Jaco, Counselor Young, your comments are noted. We do provide the Planning Commission their hearing materials 15 days prior to the hearing, and the purpose of the work sessions, just like we're having with council, is where we provide opportunity for... is where we provide opportunity for Planning Commission members to ask us questions and for us to augment our staff report or make changes to what is, will be in front of them at the hearing, prior to that hearing. We also have a process where we advise the general public in terms of timing of when they submit their comment to the Planning Commission so that there will be an opportunity for the Planning Commission to review those comments timely and then consider that as, as part of their deliberation and recommendation to you, councilors. So it has been a good process. If there is anything more that I can do going forward, I will continue to make changes. But by code, we are supposed to submit materials for hearing 15 days to the Planning Commission hearing. The other thing I will add is that we do provide materials. If you go to our project webpage, you will see draft. The draft proposed code for this particular item was issued March 9, 2023. And that was also provided when we went to the Planning Commission for the first time. I believe that work session was in May and my staff, I hear they may correct me if the date is wrong. And we posted that, shared that with the Planning Commission. And often we make it ourselves staff available and the project list staff available. That the Planning Commissioners, they don't have to collectively, but they can individually reach out to the project manager and ask specific questions or clarification. That is why we do make ourselves available. In terms of process, the only thing I will add is that there are opportunities for the Planning Commissioners. When they make a motion and that motion is not seconded, just like in your own hearing, it doesn't go forward. If it is, if it's seconded and voted down, it doesn't go forward. So that's part of the process. And hence, after a public hearing, it would not be responsible, and I have not done that in the past. It would not be responsible for me, even though as the planning director or the chief planner, I don't have the authority to make changes to the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Because we are in a public hearing process. And that will come to you as recommended by the Planning Commission. You take their testimony, you are, you have options. You can accept the Planning Commission recommendation, you can amend it, you can reject it. So you have a variety of options available to you when the matter comes before you. You're also going to hear from the public. If I may, just one more second. This housing project started in 2019. And we put a stakeholder together. We first published a planning, public participation process, which the council approved. And we started working with a stakeholder, which the county manager and the council approved in 2020. We did not complete that first phase until May of 2022, when the council approved that and gave us direction to go start working on the short-term strategies. So this has been a very involved and prolonged project that we've reached out to so many stakeholders. So this is not new. The work session I mentioned, yes, it was, the final one was June 1st. And the hearing was on June 16th. I will also add that we're not taking anything and, you know, being, giving deference to DEEP. We have been to DEEP. Two members of DEEP have been part of the stakeholders in the first phase and part of the second technical advisory group. And we have gone to them three times, sharing update and providing where we are. I will say that their memo is dated June 6. And if I may, they did say that that is based on the draft that was issued March 9. So the draft code came out March 9, 2023, and their memo is based on that. Have we made any changes since that? Yes. We've made changes since the draft came out in March of 2023. And we can talk about those when we come before you at a hearing. So let me stop there. If there's any other specific questions, I will also give shout out to the county manager for giving me the opportunity to talk with each one of you one-on-one on Monday. And we are here to answer your additional questions. And our consultant is also on board to ask, to help us answer any specific questions that you may have. After I went through the memo from DEEP, it's not a criticism, but it's like, we, we support, we support what is in front of you, but, or we supporting what is, what is in front of you, but you gotta do. Or plus, let's do additional stuff. This is something that you would have to go through and agree to either change or agree not to change. But what is now before you or going to be before you is the Planning Commission recommendation, which I have no authority to change.
And Oliver, if I can just ask one quick clarifying question. The information that was presented at the Planning Commission and the recommendations, that wasn't just county staff. That was part of the project team that had diverse stakeholders that reviewed all the information.
That's correct.
So real quick, I, I don't want this to look as a criticism of the, of the entire process. I think it has been an extreme, it's been a huge undertaking and I think it's gone very well, all things considered. I just am trying to make sure that, you know, we don't end up with, you know, like a 93% complete thing that goes through the public hearing. And I just, I personally think that we should never have a workshop any closer than three weeks to a public hearing. Because if you have it any closer, that essentially means that, you know, that the workshop is just a listening session because the documents are already being uploaded as they currently are. So that would be my one recommendation that we change is that we, we do not have a workshop prior to a public hearing any closer than three weeks.
So I, I think Glenn, those are great points. And, and we've certainly seen it in other contexts too, where we've had hearings shoot close in time to changes. Anyway, any last comment on that topic? Otherwise, I did want to-
Nope, that's all I have.
Ask a couple of questions myself.
We can look at the, the process, but this, they had three work sessions on this one. So it wasn't like the one and only one. And there was no recommendation for changes. And, and to your point, Counselor Young, I, I've heard the same thing, that 93% of the stuff's being recommended. But that was what the project team was recommending. So the information and the communication you're getting now from the community, including DEEP or BIA, those were considered by the project team and the project team opted to not recommend those items at this time. So, but that's why we have public hearings and that's why we get input so that council can review all that information and make the decision.
Thank you.
Okay. So just kind of as a follow-up to our meeting and some of the comments that, this morning. I mean, some of the, what I, I would interpret what has occurred is, you know, some of these recommendations that didn't make it through the Planning Commission are what I would couch as a minority report or a minority view. And I'm not an expert in this. And I will tell you, just strategically, my mind is that, well, this is absolutely a seller's market because of the lack of inventory. And that causes prices to be inflated. And we talked a little bit about that even last night on how assessments are so high. That causes rents to go up. That causes homelessness to increase. The whole reason why we embarked on this Affordable Housing Options Study initially was, we need to get on top of this. We need to get ahead of it. Let's open the aperture. We need all kinds of housing and appropriate locations. So, and ultimately the council will be making these decisions. So some of the, the main points for me, if, I wouldn't call it the elephant in the room, but the products that were shown to us that, oh my gosh, these look okay. These look good. The market says they are popular. And the question is, will our code preclude them? Because I wouldn't want to do that. And, you know, so that's how I kind of ended our last meeting was, you know, hey, are these products actually going to be precluded as DEEP thinks? Because I don't want to do that. You know, height limitations. Yeah, we're concerned about privacy for neighbors and what fits and what doesn't. You know, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. But to me, hey, putting an ADU on top of a garage, that's what people do. And yeah, maybe it's a little taller. And maybe the 35 foot is a better standard. You know, setbacks and, and property footprints, do we need both? Is a setback enough? I kind of think a setback is enough. You know, that, the notion that a two-car garage in the front of a building will make that undesirable because of the amount of garage visible to where the front door is. You know, I, I would want to err on the side of let the market dictate. And what is the downside to making these changes that, that DEEP believes are so important to making a marketable product that's low cost? Because that's the intent of all of this ultimately. So let me turn it back to you. If you've made any progress on looking at the proposed code and those particular products that we were shown photos of, do you have a comment on that?
The project team have reviewed all of that with the project team. And based on their deliberation is why that those items aren't being included during the, the recommendations.
Counselor, let me ask, because we looked into that, if you may indulge us quickly, let me ask our consultant to pull some examples for you so that we can let her speak to that, if it's okay. Elizabeth, I know you're online. If you can pull those pictures you shared with us to answer the question Counselor Midviggis raising.
Yes. Good morning, council. Thank you so much for having me join your council time this morning. I do have some photos and we did look into exactly these questions about how these new regulations would influence some of these existing products and, and how they might support or not support those moving forward. So let's see, I'm going to start sharing, which we'll stop sharing the current item. So we looked at some design comparisons to better understand how the proposed standard to limit the width of garages could influence what products could get built and not get built. So just go ahead and share this. So for some comparisons here, and apologies for the record. Elizabeth Decker with Jet Planning. I've been working with the project team on the Housing Options Study and Action Plan since spring of 2020. So it's been a pleasure to, to see this project through and working on this code. And, you know, for it 93%, I hope that we can work together to get it to 100%. And look forward to your feedback and comments during the, this and during the hearing. So looking at the compact lot, I think just to zoom out a little bit, I just heard you talk about opening the aperture in terms of expanding what housing types could, can be built. And that's entirely the purpose of this housing code update. It's really looking at not just can we take the housing types that are currently being built and build more of them? It's yes, but also how can we allow new housing options that have not yet been built in the county to come forward to help meet some of the unmet, unmet housing needs? And so the compact lot standards, which are a subsection of the larger code update, are specifically intended to support smaller scale options that are less expensive. And that is a priority in the Housing Options Study and Action Plan. So here's an example. This is from the city of Newport on the Oregon coast. A developer I've been working with there has really found success using some, something similar to a compact lot. And they're building 640 square foot, two-bedroom, one-bath micro cottages is what they're calling them. And so I just bring this forward as an example of, there are things that we don't yet see in the county being built that could potentially move forward. And so since we don't yet have those examples, it's harder to, to sort of understand what the options are. But as we're opening the aperture, hopefully we're creating some new opportunities. When we look at the design standards being proposed as part of these compact lot developments, the design standards include several elements, including the main entrance being oriented towards the street, the garage door being limited to 50% of the street-facing building facade. And I think that's where a lot of the comments are coming. So if your front facade is only 20 feet wide, that means that only 10 feet of that can be used for the garage. All compact lots are guaranteed at least 10 feet to make sure that a street-facing garage could be included. And then there's also some requirements around driveways. If they're facing the street, there's several options. It could either be alley loaded. It could be limited to a maximum 10-foot width. There could be a shared driveway between neighboring lots. Or larger individual driveways can be proposed if 20 feet spacing remains between those driveways, if they're arranged in that way. And that's entirely intended to preserve some on-street parking. We heard a lot of concerns and we've, you know, DEEP has rightly pointed out that if there aren't enough parking options in new developments, those can spill over. So making sure that some on-street parking for visitors or just a family that has extra cars, making sure those on-street options are available in addition to private options in garages and driveways. And the reason that these design standards are being proposed with the compact lot developments is because this is really a new, smaller-scale development option. And as those lots get smaller, there's some issues potentially around compatibility, both within the development and within, relative to neighboring developments. And also thinking about the livability of those neighborhoods, really the function, not just the aesthetics, about how people are accessing it, how people are connecting to their neighbors, how people are able to go out for a morning walk, use the sidewalks, get past, if there's a lot of driveways blocking the, blocking the sidewalk. So we're thinking about that in a 50, 100-year timeframe, not just, you know, what can be built today. So, you know, I think the goal here is certainly, we want to balance creating more homes, creating space for vehicles, which we know a lot of families are going to need, and also protecting, creating a desirable pedestrian realm. And, you know, certainly when things get out of balance, we all know what those neighborhoods feel like. So we took a look at how the lot widths, the building widths and the garages could interplay under these standards. And, you know, really what it comes down to is that the lot widths are really going to drive what garage options are allowed. So even though the, the standard is 50% of the building facade, you know, it, it doesn't scale entirely because you really have to make a binary choice. Is it a single-car garage or a double-car garage? It's not a 1.4 garage, you know, to be like 12 feet wide. So the lot width and the building facade width are really key decisions that a developer, a builder needs to make that's going under these standards would influence whether a single or double-car garage could fit with the proposed design standards. So a single-car garage, again, could fit on any lot because a guaranteed 10-feet-wide garage is permitted on any lot. But if someone's interested in building a double-car garage, the standard width for those is 16 feet. So you'd need to have a home with at least 32 feet foot wide front facade. And that's going to mean a lot. That's about 42 feet wide with a five-foot side setback on both sides. So when we look at how that works under the compact lot standards as proposed, if a developer is really looking to maximize the number of homes under these compact lot standards, some of the typical widths that are permitted in the R1.7.5, the R1.6 and the R1.5 zones might be too narrow to fit a double garage. So these are the proposed standards for the compact lots. You can see that in the interest of promoting greater flex- You can see that in the interest of promoting greater flexibility and greater numbers of homes, the minimum lot size is significantly smaller in those zones, and the minimum average lot width is 25 to 20 feet in those three zones. And just, you know, simply, at that point, you have to choose, do you want to minimize widths to maximize homes? Do you want to maximize the number of garage spaces and have wider lot widths? But if someone, again, you know, it's really those three zones where those decisions need to get made in terms of laying out a development and making some choices. There remain significant additional opportunities to build homes with double-car garages that are street-facing. You know, we've heard, this is a picture that we've seen in several of the memos, and I think it does provide a great example of a community that's been built, and from all we hear, it has been really well-received. And so, there's, this is built under the current standards, and there will continue to be the existing opportunities to build these homes, to build these new neighborhoods within the broader package of code updates. These homes could be permitted outright in all five of the zones, the single-family zones. We've actually slightly reduced those minimum lot sizes in the proposed code. You can see here, 6,500 square feet down to 4,000 square feet being proposed in the R1.5. So, if there's an interest in these homes in those developments, those can be proposed as a subdivision. There's also an opportunity, townhouses can be built down to a minimum lot width of 20 feet in all three of these zones that we're looking at, the R1.7.5 through the R1.5, and those can be lot sizes as small as 2,000 square feet, and consistent with the existing county standard, there is no limitation on garages, garage width with townhouses. So, there's still significant opportunities, in fact, improved opportunities to build these types of homes, and it's really just this compact lot development where, since an additional opportunity to build smaller-scale development is being proposed, part of that package balances the presence of garages with the livability of the community, both within and with adjacent neighborhoods. And so, that's the package that's before you, and I'll stop there and ready to answer any other questions.
Well, thank you, Elizabeth, for that. I wish that was your first slide, that you started to glaze over with all this detail until you actually got to the question. So, thank you for that. I do see and expect when we have our hearing, if there is some counterpoint to that, just that last slide showing it is available, depending on the lot size and the zoning. You know, that's something we can ultimately hear from the public on that, at the open public hearing. So, any other, Sue, you have a...
Well, just while we're talking about garages and all, I think it's great to have options, and I think related to what we'll sell, what the market will provide, if it's not built, if some of these options aren't built, we can guarantee there'll be no market for them, because there is, they don't have a choice. And so, I think it's much flexibility in the hopes that these can be more affordable, and I would just add, there's no guarantee really any of this is gonna be affordable, hopefully with more inventory, that will help, but there may be other strategies to really ensure affordability, and we need to look at that as we move through these phases.
Glenn, other questions?
Yes, I was hoping to get a little bit of clarification. So, the picture that was on several of the memos, and then you said those would continue to be able to be built that way. So, is that in entirety, or is that only in certain situations? Like, I mean, on skinny line, I mean, it shows a double garage, so from, I mean, if you have a 25, 20-foot-wide building, you cannot build that, correct?
Yes, if you have a 20-foot-wide building, you could not, under the compact lot development standards, you could not propose a double-car garage. I think the issue here is, if these homes are already being built, they're by definition not being built under the compact lot standards, because those aren't currently permitted. So, currently, there are other options, developers are finding pathways in the existing code to build these narrower lots. Sometimes, that's in the medium-density zones, where there are smaller minimum lot sizes and minimum lot widths existing, and none of those are proposed to change. So, by definition, if you can do it under the existing code, most of those options will remain or be expanded. And so, this is an additional opportunity under the compact lots being proposed, and so it is additive rather than subtractive.
But it could be potentially more additive. That's kind of what's up for question here, is...
Yes, I'm not sure we're, yeah, glad to hear the council feedback and direction.
Yeah, and you know, something that I never really thought about, but had a discussion about this the other day, is there are other implications besides, I mean, most of this is driven by looks, essentially. I know that there's the argument that we want off-street parking, but that off-street parking is gonna be taken if there's no, I mean, that on-street parking is gonna be used if there's no off-street parking to cover it. But there's also issues of, like, ADA accessibility is very challenging, if not impossible, in a single-car garage. Chargers, you know, if people have two cars but only have two locations, and then there's also, you know, I hate garages, I'll be honest with you. I love them, I have a love-hate relationship with them, because they are ugly, they are not a very good use of space in most situations. However, they are something that people would like, and when we start minimizing sizes of garages, one of the unintended consequences we might see is more demand for, for like, mini-storage units and stuff, which are an absolutely atrocious use of space, in my opinion, but apparently, there's a need for it in the community. So, anyway, I appreciate bringing this forward, I'm glad we did and continue to have this little briefing, because that was helpful information.
Just one more question, I was inspired by your comments, Counselor, because I think it's more than just looks. I think it really is how a community interacts with each other. If all you see is a garage, if there are no people in the front yard as you walk down the sidewalk, I think it's how a community interacts with each other, and that you have a sense of community. So, I really think that the livability aspect is valuable.
Any further comments or questions by anyone? Thank you, Oliver, for bringing the team in, and for the consultant, and the responsiveness to some of our one-on-one discussions, and some of the input we've received from the development industry out there. I mean, we want to do this right as best we can, and I think everyone here has the same goals in mind and the same good heart. It's just kind of parsing through all the detail, especially for us non-builders. I personally love garages, I wish I had more of them, but, anyway. If there's nothing further, did you have anything on this topic? Thank you, Oliver.
Yeah, thank you, Counselors. We will expand on some of the changes that have been made since the draft came out. Some of those changes incorporated, the new, some of the new house bills that was passed this year, just want to make that as an observation, but we will further discuss that at your hearings.
Super. All right, well, let's get right to council reports.
We do, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Did I miss something? Any council reports? Glenn, you have your mic on? Did you have a council report?
I probably did, but I've been sick this week and have been struggling just to stay on top of what I need to stay on top of, so I'm not aware of anything right now.
Okay, super. And I kind of mentioned the one meeting I had this morning with Senator Wilson, it was not only on Larch, but also on our railroad, because she was a prime mover and shaker and modifier of the original failed legislation, that she did get through the legislature and have the governor sign. So, I was getting some, a tutorial on that legislative process and what was intended by the legislation. It was very, very, very helpful, and I assume we'll get into these discussions when we have the next presentation, and next steps. So, I don't have anything further on council reports, work session requests?
Yes, we just have one this morning, it's regarding the Comcast cable franchise renewal update, so staff and Jim Demmon from CBTV have been negotiating for the last, I believe, couple of years. And so, what they're wanting is just a 30-minute work session in November to talk about the negotiations, what's being recommended or not being recommended, to get council's feedback to make sure we're on the same page. This contract is set to expire in July of 2024.
And so, super, my input on that is, one, we need timelines, you know, and it's beyond Comcast, but responsiveness and getting these franchise agreements completed, and some kind of reasonable timeline for all the other cable providers out there.
Yeah, and I can share on this one, it doesn't expire until next year, so they actually started really early to make sure we met that timeline.
Super, okay.
I would just be interested if there's customer feedback on how the service is being provided, if that's part of, could be part of this, getting a better understanding of that and the geographic areas served.
Okay, so, I think we have three thumbs up to hear this work request. Policy issues, I know we have an inbound policy advisor.
Yes, new policy house will be starting in August, I believe, the 20th. I will share that Comcast ARPA agreement is with Comcast now, so their attorneys are going through it, so that's good. And I don't know if we have any other updates for today. I will share that Oliver's group is ready to have the discussion on next steps with the railroad, waiting for some information from legal, and we hopefully all get an update by end of this week.
Okay, executive sessions, actually, I didn't realize we were having them today. Okay, so, we have 7.1 pending litigation under RCW 42.30.110, per N1, per N, little I, 10 minutes with possible after-action, 7.2, and obviously, these will all be with the lawyer, 7.2 qualifications of an applicant for public employment, RCW 42.30.110, per N1, per N G, 10 minutes, also with possible action. Let's take a five-minute break, go into the session, well, I have about 10 after, 11 after. Let's start at 20 after, does that work? Then we'll have 20 minutes, and, so, let's kind of coming back a quarter of...
Okay, that's a little long, it could be 11:40 for 20 minutes, but we can do 11:45 and not have to extend if needed, so 11:45.
That will be back here.
Yes, that work? Okay.
I think that's a fair approximation. All right, so, we'll be back after our executive sessions. All right, we're back in session after holding two executive sessions. Are there any motions?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to grant April 1st Ray Smith, Victoria Abram, Ken Later, and Paul Newman's request for the county to provide a defense and indemnification in the lawsuit entitled Reginald and Reginald versus Firth et al., pursuant to Clark County Code 2.97.025.
Thank you, I'll go ahead and second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Any additional motions?
Yes, I move that we reappoint the, our existing representative on the Historical Preservation Commission, Andrew Gregg, for a second term.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I wouldn't mind making a quick comment, that we received lots of very valid applicants, and we just have an outstanding candidate that has served us very well, and I feel is worthy of continuing in that service.
Not hearing any further discussion? All those in favors, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, sounds unanimous, motion carries, and we are adjourned.